Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, November 17th regular meeting of the Grandville Executive Village School District. Would you please rise for the pledge allegiance and Ms. Deeds would you like to lead us, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone tonight. Mr. Brown will say you can leave, but you have to stay.
The Boy Scouts have to stay. Sorry, guys.
No, welcome. Could you take the roll, please?
Mr. Wolf?
Here.
Ms. Shaw?
Here.
Ms. Deeds?
Here.
Mr. Kronk?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Take the roll, please.
Ms. Deeds?
Hi.
Ms. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Kronk?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Wolf?
Aye. And now the portion of the meeting that I know most of you came for.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry, my voice is a little rough. I woke up this morning with a little bit of a head cold, so I won't be shaking hands tonight. I'll just be giving out hints, alright? Tonight, we'd like to recognize 13 GHS students for being recognized as commended scholars or semifinalists in the National Merit Scholar Program. The National Merit Scholarship Program honors individual students who show exceptional academic ability and potential for success in rigorous college studies. Over 1.3 million juniors in about 21,000 high schools enter the 2025 National Merit Scholarship Program by taking the PSAT, which served as an initial screen for program entrance. From over 16,000 semifinalists, more than 15,000 are expected to advance to the finalist level, and in February, they will be notified of this designation. The winners of the 2025 will be announced in April and concluding in July. The scholarship recipients will be joined by nearly 375,000 other distinguished young people who have earned the title of National Merit Scholar. So, we have 13, and just so you are aware, for us to have 13 scholars based on our school size is pretty rare. The academic attainment of the people that are on the list is pretty significant. So, take into account the magnitude that we're going to be discussing. So, we have National Merit Commended Scholars, and I'm going to ask you to come up and stand across here. It's very awkward, but you'll get used to it. We have William Ebner, Sam Hanning, Glenn Klee, Ben Mullet, Ben Prokop, Calum Sproul, Jayden Strager, and Ian Walter. They are commended scholars. Thank you. Joining them are National Merit semifinalists Jack Khan, JV Kirby, Nora Mitten-Fry, Puran Somrath, and Owen White. What I can tell you is, I'm the one person up here that was never a mer- semifinalist or a scholar. Everybody smile because you're going to be on Facebook. Get all the pictures? Congratulations, everyone. And I ran through kind of the statistics, but it really is rare to have that number of students, but also having five semifinalists, I think the highest we've had in any year was like three or four. So, it's a very challenging environment to get to that level. So, good luck as you continue that pursuit, and we're very proud of you on your academic attainment. Now, we'd like to recognize members of our GHS Boys and Girls Cross Country Teams for qualifying and participating in the state tournament. The girls' cross-country team was comprised of GHS students Lily Kronk, Ava Meister, Elsa Tonason, Blake Witter, Margaret McDonald, Ruby Lukchuga, and Olive Dorman. They began their postseason strong finishing second at the district meet. The first place winner of that meet is the eventual Division II state champ, so that says something. At regionals, the team placed fifth, highlighted by an outstanding performance by Elsa Tonason, who finished fourth overall at the time of 1838. Very impressive, I know I could never get better. Her impressive run earned her All-American honors awarded to the female runner who competes and races in under 19 minutes. The team went on to place 21st at the state meet. Their goal this year was simply to qualify for the state race, and they accomplished that. And we hope more success in the years to come. We also have, for the boys, Logan Miller, had the best season by any sophomore in the history of the boys' cross-country team this year. He led the team to the LCL Conference Championship, winning the race at a time of 1549. He's the only non-senior to ever run under 16 minutes and now holds the third fastest time in Grandville history. He led the team to a district championship and competed at the state meet on November 1st, where he placed 39th. This earned him Second Team All-Ohio honors. Logan's work ethic is exemplary and his attitude is also very positive. His success on the racecourse reflects his character and his desire to always do his best. He is a model student athlete and has represented Grandville with honor and pride this season. So, can we have our runners run up here?
All right, coaches coming up.
Alright, now they're used to getting their picture taken, so usually on a podium. Everybody got their pictures? Alright, congratulations. Next month, we will represent some of the other sports teams from the fall that also participated in state tournaments. So, we just didn't have the time or the space to bring them to this meeting. So, congratulations to everyone that was honored tonight. We appreciate not only your commitment to academics but athletics and your commitment to our portrait of our graduate competencies, which will serve you well in life. So, congratulations, and thank you very much. That concludes the commendations.
Thank you. This is where Mr. Brown usually says-
I didn't say it on purpose.
Says, "Feel free to leave if you'd like, but you're missing the internationally award-winning financial-
... met with prior support meeting, they're going to stay and part of their civic badge."
Correct.
Citizenship in the community.
Citizenship in the community. Very good. I told them it was going to be a short meeting, so let's not make me a liar.
Is that in your background?
No, just do the voice. Student services, look at that.
Alright, so jumping into our October financial report. First, starting with our cash balance. Our cash balance is about $6.7 million less than where we were last October. That again is due to the transfer of the Capital Projects Fund, which we made in June of 2025. So, we expect expected this year's cash balance to be below last year, so that's anticipated. Looking at revenue just for the month of October, we did have the income tax this month, but we still have the leftover timing variance from the home set and rollback, which came in a different month last year, so you won't really see it reflected here, but the income tax was 9% higher than last October's payment. So, that's trending in the right direction. I think we've had now three consecutive quarters of growth, so that's positive. And then also this month, state revenue, they actually implemented the new funding formula. So, we are getting these performance supplement and a catch-up from the previous months of this fiscal year of that component of the formula. So then, when we look at fiscal year-to-date, that's where the timing variance is kind of washed out for local taxes, you can see the increase there, as well as a slight increase for state revenue again for that performance supplement. On the expenditure side, nothing really too much to highlight this month. Our typical increases with salaries and benefits, and then prior year included the Capital Projects Fund transfer in October that we don't obviously have this year. Year-to-date, similar situation. We just have our typical salary increases and insurance, and we're continuing to see an increase in per service line. For capital projects, we did wrap up the air handler one and five at the high school. You do still see a small amount, $3,000, a little over $3,000 remaining in that project account. And essentially, train, the vendor on that project offers a discount if we pay within 10 days, I think it is. So, every time we pay those invoices, we accumulate savings there. So, what will happen is, the next project that we identify, we will first utilize the 1,900 from previous projects, then that 3,000, and then we'll dip into the seven point two that we have to use of those funds. And then the boiler project will be hopefully completed in December. And then that brings us to our capture consolation and wraps up the financial report unless there's any questions or comments. We will highlight some of the property tax issues during board discussion.
Thank you.
I told the Scouts that was one of my favorite parts of the meeting. Fantastic, Ed. It's really important stuff.
We're at the portion of the meeting for public comments. If anyone would like to address the board, light them up, share your name and address with us. Okay, seeing none, we're on to board discussion.
Okay, I'll tee this up a little bit. As Brittany mentioned, typically, in a budget year, there's a pretty typical beginning and end to the budget cycle and the budget conversation. That's not the case this year. That conversation has continued at the General Assembly either through vetoes by the governor and/or veto overrides by the General Assembly. And the governor formed a public or a property tax work group that was supposed to kind of address some of the concerns of this kind of confluence of property tax issues coming together all at the same time. So, a byproduct of not only that work group, but the General Assembly created four bills that are attempting to address the, what I would call, one-time issue of the astronomical increase in property tax values that has occurred statewide. So, you have House Bill 186, which is, most of the, most of the bills are really aimed at districts that are below the 20-mill floor, which Grandville is not. It would take me an hour to explain to you what the 20-mill floor is because it's kind of a concept that is unique to schools. So, House Bill 186, House Bill 129, and House Bill 309 are all aimed at kind of districts below the 20-mill floor and some, the use of substitute and emergency levies. It also gives the county commissioners or the budget commission authority to adjust taxation at their discretion with a certain threshold, I guess is the best way to describe that. Really, the bill that impacts us the most is House Bill 335. House Bill 335 is really trying to cap inside millage, our 10 mills of inside millage at, is it 10 mills? No, it's what-
It's a max of 10 mills.
A max of 10 mills, so it's-
We only get a portion of that.
Right, correct. I knew that, was wrong as soon as I said it. But it's the one portion of our millage that does grow with inflation. House Bill 335 would cap that at an inflationary growth measure. It's a GDP deflator amount. So, it would kind of limit the amount of growth that we would receive. It is, it is going to impact us because in this current environment, we have been seeing higher-than-typical growth patterns in that, in that property value increase. So, we will see some impact on that, but it is kind of the best that we can do under this environment, not only in the General Assembly, but in the state of Ohio at this time. So, we wanted to kind of level set that, and Brittany can obviously speak more intelligently than I can about the impact, but it is important to know that because there is this, the threat of a potential property tax referendum to eliminate all property tax in the state of Ohio, and I think what people need to understand is, if there's no way to fund those things, those things go away. And we're talking about fire, police, roads, seniors, disability services, schools-
Libraries.
Libraries, you name it, it's funded by property tax in the state of Ohio. So, I think the General Assembly is potentially reacting slash overreacting to that issue. However, it is something that we're going to have to deal with. And so, I anticipate, we anticipate, that November 19th, we will see a vote of, on those award bills. We expect those to pass. Will Schwartz, our lobbyist for the Alliance, has been working tirelessly to try and minimize the impact on Alliance districts. Most of the Alliance districts are not at the 20-mill floor, so. Brittany, anything to add to that?
No, so, House Bill 335, just to clarify, it wouldn't actually be a loss of revenue. It's a loss of potential growth of future revenue, just to clarify. So, it's hard, it's a little harder to quantify because it's dependent upon what future values do, which of course is anybody's guess. But if this had been in place previously, we would have received about $340,000 less in revenue during the last root renewal cycle, still providing context.
Oh, that's, that's good to know. So, how much inside millage do we currently have, and how does that relate to this 10-mill cap?
Yes, it's 5.2 mills is what we receive. That is split between general operating, which is 2.4, and then the remaining 2.75 is what funds our permanent improvement fund. We moved that from the general fund to PI back when we passed the income tax because we had a PI levy previously that we let expire when the income tax passed and moved that to PI as a way to have growth in the permanent improvement fund to, you know, try to keep pace with the capital needs of the district, which is kind of interesting because that has not happened at all. So, we keep talking about property values increasing at a rate higher than inflation, but when we're looking at some of the pricing and quotes that we're getting for some of our capital improvements, I would argue-
My question.
Yeah.
So, the air handler units that we're talking about, one and five, six years ago, that would have been a $400,000 project. It's a $1.3 million project now. That's insane. So, that's, that's what, a tangible example of that inflationary increase. So, is that 10 mills sort of a community-wide, or is that just a school-wide being?
Yeah.
Are there other inside millage for other organizations?
Yeah, so as a property taxpayer, you wouldn't pay more than 10 mills across all over-rackening jurisdictions.
So, are there other Grandville jurisdictions that would have the other 3 mills or whatever?
Yeah.
How do the districts then collaborate to say, alright, we're at eight total inside mills, who gets the other two if we decide to go-
That's a really great question.
Arm wrestling usually works.
The best thing that I can say is that this was set a long time ago, and that's just kind of how it's, how it stayed. I honestly don't know how that was all exactly determined, but most, most school districts are around where ours is. So, you don't see a school district that has all 10 of the inside mills and then some only have two, like it's all pretty much around the same amount. And I would say that kind of makes sense because most of, most people's tax bill is about 60% goes to schools just in total. So, to be at 5.2 out of 10 is kind of in that ballpark, so that kind of makes sense of how it's split up, but that was a long time before my time.
I guess moving forward, is there consensus among school treasurer, school superintendent, school boards, that any upcoming levies, we would go for an inside millage versus-
So, you don't go for inside millage versus outside millage? You just have a general millage increase?
Inside millage is set, it can change. That's what I should say, yeah.
As complicated as funding is, let alone for our taxpayers, just-
Right.
How do we understand which one are we going to keep versus let expire? Or with the rates of inflation, do we go after permanent improvements at this point, right?
And we shared earlier with, with the Cub Scouts, it's not necessary- And, and we shared earlier with, with the Cub Scouts, it's not necessary, oh, I mean, the Boy Scout, sorry, Scout, sorry. Sorry, I keep saying that, sorry. Didn't mean to look at that.
No offense, no offense.
No offense taken.
Yes, yeah. The Scouts, it's all about the services. It's not, taxation is paying for services that you're receiving. So, if you call 911, you expect the police or the fire to show up. So, that is the service that you're paying for through these taxation models. And if you don't want to pay property tax, then you're going to pay some other tax for that service because it's a critical service. We, we heard, we heard estimates today from people with, that are in the know, in the governor's workforce, that if they were to try and replace property tax with a sales tax, it would be upwards of 20%. Or a sales tax, or an income tax of close to 10%. So, property tax is a way to diversify taxation for, you know, Ohioans. And it's an effective tool. So, I think it's misguided to take that away.
So, you say that the lawmakers are trying to overcompensate for, you know, inflation, or re-brazel, sorry. So, how are they justifying this to taxpayers if it, if we're going to have to make up for it in some way? Is that, what is the, what's?
Well, that's what, that's...
They don't talk about that part.
But is it not election year?
No, because it's like, people don't want to hear.
But if someone said to me, you are not, you, if we pass this, don't worry, your property tax is going to go down, but in a year, you're going to have 20% sales tax. You know what I mean? Like, how, that's the whole point, right?
So, they're, they're responding to the problem, which is high property taxes in districts that are on the 20 mil floor. Because Granville did not see increases like other districts did during, during the last reappraisal. Because our tax rates are adjusted down, so we did not see that kind of increase. So, they're responding to that. So, they're going to be able to tell taxpayers, we reduce property taxes. But what they're not saying is that it's going to have to be made up in a sales tax or an income tax, or that the local taxpayers are just going to have to turn around and vote to replace that millage in a new operating levy one or two years down the road, which they just did this past week, or two weeks ago. Record number of?
They don't levy?
No.
No.
Past, oh, past, sorry. And so, that's actually showing us that local communities are supporting their schools. So, it's a really interesting time.
Yes. That's a great way of saying that. So, I would guess, like, in the state of Ohio, are 60%, 80% of schools on the 20 mil floor?
I think it's like 400.
It's 400 school districts out of 60.
Out of six, yeah.
66% or something. And that number has grown over the last eight years.
It's not doubled.
Yeah, doubled. It was about 200, and now it's 400 because, so, it makes sense to try and get, in, only recently, because of other changes in taxation and state preference and law and things like that, have twice as many school districts now, people don't vote themselves on taxes. Their taxes just increase, right? Granville's kind of unique, and we've always kind of been on the floor, right? So, we've had to vote, right? So, it will be interesting, right? And I'm not sure if it's unhealthy that people will have to vote for school taxes, because it's like the time that people engage, right? And the time that people really realize it. And when people realize that, like, and this could be a very painful process, right? When people realize that when they don't vote for the school property taxes, their quality of schools go down, right? That's not a concept that, you know, 400 districts have right now, because they don't have that opportunity and things like that. There's going to be a, a direct relationship and feedback there, right? That's not been there before. And I think you'll get the same thing. You'll get people stepping up and vote for their schools, right? The transition is going to be really hard for people who would just think they want less property taxes, but don't realize that that actually pays for something, right? And I've kind of always said that, like, that'd be sort of, sort of a healthy thing and very painful thing. It's the school board, right? Because you have to ask people for more money. But like, it's when people get engaged, right? And they realize like, wow, actually, your costs are not going up very much from the inflation. That's what we should have, right? Well, actually, you have really great product, right? And, you know, if you look at the cost to educate students in Granville, it's, it's on par with, with many others and less than many that we compare ourselves to. I think it's kind of a healthy process. I don't know how that's going to go across the state with folks that are, have not been engaged in that way, because we have a very, a community that's very engaged, right? And willing and able to be educated to some extent and go through that process and has been, has been regularly supportive of Granville schools for a long time.
I, I would also extend that to the county as well, because one of the concerning bills is 309, which is the one with the budget, concerning the budget commission, can basically arbitrarily reduce the millage. So, even if you go through the process of the levy, and even if the community says, we want to fund schools at this level, the budget commission can still come in and say, no, actually, we think that you need less.
He's at the same for fire and libraries and police and all that kind of stuff, or will they get funds somewhere else?
No, they, they are relying on property tax as well. Townships do not have the authority to issue an income tax. So, they rely only on.
So, they can't do anything else if, you know, like, how will they get more money?
They won't. Like, that's why, it's very, it's...
They can rest their own load on property tax.
So, it seems unlikely, you know, that a total elimination of property tax would actually pass, because like, we heard former Representative Bill Seitz speak at Capitol Conference this afternoon, and it's like, the, the campaign writes itself, the marketing writes itself against eliminating property tax, because you're talking about complete elimination of all of these services across the board.
Or 20% sales tax.
Or 20%.
I heard it's a 10% for everything else.
Yeah, or just crazy astronomical numbers. So, it seems like people would support something like that right now. I've even seen it in my local neighborhood, signing petitions to, to support that kind of thing. But if you take just a moment to educate people on it, most people, yeah, will come around and understand that that's not a good solution.
It's an easy thing to campaign on, right? If you're going for governor, if you're like, who knows what position and things like that. You could say, I'll reduce your taxes, or hey, without saying anything about reducing services or other taxes that will increase, right? So, it's just a thing.
It was brought up today at, at the Capitol Conference, and, and this is my concern, is that the legislature is, their reaction, the way I characterize it, they're throwing the baby out with the bathwater. They're not taking a measured approach, because everyone knows there need to be changes. But they're not taking a measured approach. And it's, and it's going to be jolting to these, to these entities. And, and the three panelists, two of them were involved, or all three of them were involved on the governor's committee addressing this. They, they emphasize that, that there can be changes, but this is really abrupt, what they're, what they're trying to do. So, I mean, this afternoon, it was very enlightening. It was good to hear some open, honest discussion about it and just, and laying it out there.
Well, and I had this novel idea, but it was mentioned today. You know, school district employees are required to do a lot of professional development related to what we do as a craft. I think the General Assembly needs history lessons, because Dr. Browning said, you know, listen, every member of the General Assembly should get a history lesson on taxation and understand the why we are where we are equation. And I think that's very important. And they don't receive that, except for what happens within the caucus. And that's not necessarily what needs to happen. I think they, there needs to be a broader conversation about building people's capacity if they're making decisions related to Ohioans.
And Dr. Browning, that Mr. Brown's referring to, was a former state budget director for Ohio, so. And same with Mr. Seitz, who's a former state rep and state senator who was in leadership. And, and a matter of fact, he was a former school board member. So, he had a true appreciation of what the legislature's doing and what the impact will be. So, that was, that, that was really good to hear.
I thought it was one of the best panels that we've had. Yeah. They're tricky problems to solve, right? And especially from a broad level, right? From the state level, it's really a tricky problem to solve, which is, I'm really an advocate of local school boards having control of their own property taxes and things like that and so forth, because the more local you get the decision-making, the more relevant it is to the kids, right? And even to the local household, right? The best people that make decisions about their kid's education are the parents, right? And the kids themselves, right? And how they engage and things like that. And there's just so many unintended consequences that, oh, it seems good to reduce property tax. That'd be nice. Everybody would like that. But what happens, right? I'm also a little phobic about the unintended consequences of the move to privatize much education, right? Which, you know, at one level, some people thinks is a positive and has some benefits and things like that. But there are so many complex repercussions economically and socially to not favoring public schools and, and set of options and things like that. But it's a really challenging problem to work through. Dr. Fleeter shared some statistics on that. The escalation of choice funding in the last two years is the magnitude of close to a billion dollars. And, and understand that billion dollars is not audited or tracked in any way, and there's no accountability for those funds. And so, it's hard to cry that we're, or, you know, as a state, when we're sending a million, a billion dollars out that is un-audited and not checked on at all. So, I think some of the things that we, we talked about today were, you know, you can have choice, but, you know, I think you have an obligation, once you accept taxpayer dollars, to be responsible to those taxpayers and answer their questions. So.
Well, I thought it was interesting, Bill Seitz admitted he's a school choice. He's for school choice, but he can't abandon public school.
Correct.
He's just an education proponent.
Right, right.
One of the other points that Dr. Fleeter made was that the funding that's going to the Ed Choice, 96% of the recipients were never enrolled in public schools.
Already there. Yeah.
And not talking, kids moving from.
Now, there wasn't a mass exodus, yeah.
So, fun time to be on a school board.
Yeah. Other items to talk about, board discussion?
Yes, sure. Does anybody else have? I was just going to add, recently, the, the Licking County United Way hosts monthly community forums, and this, for November, it was dealing with youth, youth and substance abuse. Ms. Spence and I attended. Would you like to add anything, Ms. Spence, about it?
It was just an opportunity to kind of hear what agencies are available, what they do, what the difference between treatment and assessment is, what's available, the partnerships that are out there. You know, so it was a good overview, I think, of what's available in our community. It's the linking of, you know, how do we work with schools? How do we work with parents who are, who are going through treatment with their children? Are they willing to have those conversations with people outside of their treatment team, which can be a challenge, so.
Yeah, and I took away, one of, one of the things I thought was really important. There is a difference between prevention, which is education, and treatment. And the more we can educate the whole community on that and the importance of it, I think it will benefit everyone. But it, it was, it was a good forum, and I, I'm glad to see we're talking about these things and not hiding them under a rock. The other thing was I had the pleasure and privilege of attending the GHS Veterans Day breakfast that Mr. Wade and, is it Interact, is that? Club and other students hosted this year. Biggest event they've had, had 44 veterans and their family members there. Just a wonderful event, watching our students interact with veterans in the community and, and seeing, and it has a soft spot in my heart, since my son currently serves as active duty in the Army, the respect and appreciation that our community has for our veterans. So, kudos to our students and administration and, and staff for that breakfast. I think it's something every year is, Mr. Wade said to me, he has a good problem. Is the library going to be big enough to host next year's, which, if that's the biggest problem, then that's a good one to have. But it was a, it was a great event. Oh, and thanks to Mr., Mr. Smith, he had part of the band come in to play the National Anthem, and they were great. It's a really good night.
Wonderful, wonderful celebration. Stephen Carpenter, Scott Carpenter's son, who graduated from Granville, who flies Blackhawks, was the speaker for all of that. It was excellent. Well done.
Any other board discussion? Okay, let's move on to the action agenda.
Okay. Action item 6.01 is, are the board policies, this is the second reading and the adoption of the laundry list of policies that are a byproduct of House Bill 96. So, second? Any questions?
Take the roll, please.
Mr. Crump?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Ms. Deeds?
Aye.
Ms. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Wolf?
Aye.
6.02 is the approval of resignation.
Second.
I think I'm going to be on hold for about 30 seconds.
Saw how fast.
Any questions or comments?
Do you want to explain that levy?
So, Mrs. Ormond and I are taking advantage of the ability to retire and retire. I have the ability, because I've been in education for 32 years, to retire within the retirement system. But I love what I do, and I want to continue to serve this community. So, I'd like to work for five more years for this term of the contract that is also on this agenda. So, hopefully, I get to continue my service to this community. I'd rather vote on 6.04, which is the approval.
Right.
You have to put the egg before.
Yeah, exactly.
And it won't, it's effective July 30th of 2026. So, just so everyone's aware of that. Take the roll, please.
Ms. Deeds?
Aye.
Ms. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Crump?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Wolf?
Aye.
Okay, 6.03 is the approval of resignation of GMS principal.
Second.
Similar situation.
Same, same, same exact situation.
But Mrs. Ormond's not here, so. If you're watching, Mrs. Ormond, take the roll, please.
Ms. Deeds?
Aye.
Ms. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Crump?
Aye.
Mr. Wolf?
Aye.
Fred, I think you have to, yeah. You might have to.
You can't do.
I don't think I can.
Okay. Item 6.05, approval of, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Sorry. 6, 6.04, approval of superintendent's contract. This is approval of the employment contract for Jeff Brown as superintendent of schools for a term of five years from August 1, 2026 to July 31, 2031.
Feels good. Thank you, Jeff, for your continued service.
Thank you.
Yes, we're, don't want to speak for the whole board, but I'm very excited that you want to continue and have your sound leadership here.
Thank you.
Take the roll, please.
Ms. Deeds?
Aye.
Ms. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Crump?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Wolf?
Aye.
Thank you. 6.05, approval of GMS principal contract.
Mr. Luke? Second.
You good?
Uh, yeah.
Any discussion? Very similar circumstance.
Take the roll, please.
Ms. Deeds?
Aye.
Ms. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Crong?
Aye.
Mr. Wolf?
Aye.
Thank you. 6.07 is the approval of the statement of district compliance.
6.06?
Oh. Oh, 6.06. I'm sorry, I skipped right over that.
You set up.
6.06. Item 6.06 is the approval of the 2026, 2027 school district calendar. This is the second reading and approval. So very similar to the calendar from last year or this year. Actually. Yeah.
Take the roll, please.
Mr. Crong?
Aye.
Ms. Deeds?
Aye.
Ms. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Wolf?
Aye.
Okay, now to 6.07, approval of statement of district compliance.
Second.
We are required annually to approve a statement of district compliance with the nutritional standards for USDA. So we will do that tonight and then submit that through our reporting mechanism to the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce.
Take the roll, please.
As I recall, our standards are pretty high relative to that. I mean, we exceed many of the standards. Fantastic, feels good.
Take the roll, please.
Ms. Shaw?
Aye.
Ms. Deeds?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Crong?
Aye.
Mr. Wolf?
Aye.
6.08 is a resolution declaring transportation impractical.
Mr. Luke? Second.
Okay, this is our, it seems pretty annual, our declaration that Marburn Academy is impractical. So this, remember, this is a two-step process. The next step will be the payment in lieu of transportation.
Good, Mr. Brown, could you explain that a little bit for our guests?
Yes. So if we have a student that's being educated at a school district and/or entity that is a single person or a small group, we have the ability to deem it impractical because it wouldn't make sense to take an entire bus for one student to a specific location. But the state of Ohio recognizes that that places a burden on the parent and creates an opportunity for them to get funded for that transportation for the year. So to be deemed impractical and then the parent has the ability to seek close to $1,000, which is set at the state level to recoup costs for transport, transporting their own child. Thank you. Is it $1,000 number a standard number?
No, it increases, well, actually, there's a minimum and a maximum. It's based on the T1 and the T2 data that all districts submit annually based on the actual, is the average actual cost to transport a student based on the data that's submitted.
Take the roll, please.
Ms. Deeds?
Aye.
Ms. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Crong?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Wolf?
Aye.
So is $1,000 a number that's our average actual cost to transport a student?
This is state average.
State average. Yeah, probably said that.
Yeah.
All right, next is the consent agenda. 12.01. Will you move? 7.03? Somebody?
Second.
Okay, I will call your attention to the retirement section. We talked about Ms. Ormond and I, but really a person that is choosing to retire has been an absolute gift to this community related to physics and astronomy and physics in general. Not only as a parent, but as a superintendent, I've been out during his nightly watches on the GIS and planetary explanations. Mike has been a phenomenal employee and a great educator for Granville schools. And he is retiring at the end of this year. So we will miss him tremendously, so with appreciation of service, but also a little bit of regret. My kids always said he was just one of the best explainers of things ever, right? He would just find a way to explain things to kids to make it, make them understand. Really tough thing sometimes and so forth, but he's got great experience and he'll be sort of nice with things. And then we have the typical other consent agenda items. There is a trip for the blue steel that I believe is on here as well.
Will we hear about the Granville Education Foundation grants at some point?
Yes.
Cool, okay.
I believe John referenced them at the last meeting, but we can give a more detailed report.
Yeah, they, well, they typically post it on their book feed as well once the teachers complete purchases and start the education process with those grants.
Those must have dealt with Facebook community. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Crong.
You can put together a little more stuff.
There we go, a piece of paper. That'd be beautiful.
As an ex officio member of that board, I will.
We have a motion in a second.
We have ideas, James.
Take the roll, please.
Mr. Crong?
Aye.
Ms. Shaw?
Aye.
Ms. Deeds?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Wolf?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item 8.01, the approval of the funded man from the General Fund to bond retirement.
Mr. Luke? Second.
This is, so we have two items tonight that are related to the bond refunding that we completed. The first one is related to the cash side of the equation. So we had an extra payment that had to be made as part of that bond refunding. So that was not taken into account when we set the millage rate last year at this time. So we just have a cash flow issue. So similar to what we do with the grants at the end of the fiscal year, we're doing for the bond retirement. And then once we receive our next property tax payment, which will be in January, or should be in January, we will be able to do the return payments back to the General Fund. And then the second piece is related to budget, which I'll talk about next.
That's, this is fantastic success for us. What was the overall savings from the refunding of that fund?
Yeah, that was about eight, just over 800,000.
776,000.
You should never remember that, but.
She was on attorney's leave. That's into my brain, yes. That's huge, thank you very much. We're good luck in that process and so forth to save the taxpayer's money.
Take the roll, please.
Ms. Deeds?
Aye.
Ms. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Crong?
Aye.
Mr. Wolf?
Aye.
Thank you. 8.02 is approval of the current appropriation resolution.
Mr. Luke? Second.
Okay, and similarly, we are, we will have an extra principal payment with the way that the new bonds are structured. So we're kind of doubling up or overlapping a little bit in this fiscal year. So have to increase the budget, which is the only change that we're making to appropriations at this time.
Is that at one time?
Yeah. Well, so the way that it's structured is the old bonds had a whole principal payment in December. The new ones have one in June and one in December. So we have basically a whole year's worth of payment due in December and then like half in June. So it's just a timing issue for this fiscal year.
Thank you. Is the operating time?
Bond retirement.
Bond retirement.
Yeah, so appropriations are basically our budget at the fund level.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Take the roll, please.
Ms. Deeds?
Aye.
Ms. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Crong?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Wolf?
Aye. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Take the roll, please.
Ms. Deeds?
Aye.
Ms. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Crong?
Aye.
Mr. Wolf?
Aye.